Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor, the Mayor of Menlo Park, and welcome to our December 10th special City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in the Bellhaven Community Campus. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers on one item. First, I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Mayor Cecilia Taylor, Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Betsy Nash, Maria Door, and Jen Woolison. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltay, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. Please note that agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call in alphabetical order based on first name. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to our December 10th special City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, at that time, you can engage your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. That does conclude my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. The next agenda item is Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members. Does the City Council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items? Does the City Council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? The next item is Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda items brought up under Public Comment unless they're other than to provide general information. City Clerk Heron, please call for Public Comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Currently seeing one virtual hand. So this will be the final call for Public Comment for Item D, General Public Comment, for items not on tonight's agenda. All right, so our speaker is going to be John Selling? John, you should be able to unmute your microphone at this time.
Thank you. Hello?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for putting this in this section. My name is John Selling, and I'm writing about the Sunset Magazine space that is on the corner of Willow and Middlefield Road that is slated to be developed. I live about three blocks away from that space. So the tower that is planning, one of the three towers that's planning to be developed is 39 stories. It will literally shadow my house. There are two other towers that are 33 and, I believe, 18 stories in height that are slated for this seven-acre area. The number of employees is estimated to be about 3,000 employees. And there are only spaces for 665 affordable care units, meaning the number of employees are going to exceed the number of units. And also, it's estimated that the number of parking spaces for those 3,000 employees are not planned on the property. Only about 1,400 spaces have been allotted. That would mean a couple of thousand cars would need to be parked in the surrounding neighborhoods. As you know, these neighborhoods are full of, it's residential housing with maximum height of about two stories on the residential housing. There's a couple of three-story apartments. But anyway, I just want to bring this up because, and we realize something is going to be developed there, but it is only seven acres. And other sites in Menlo Park that are being developed, there's nothing this big. You know, five stories is about the limit. And even with those developments, there's quite a bit more acreage. So our hope is that we can get on this and stop this. The developer is in 17. It's financed by the son of a Russian oligarch who bought the property and obviously is not going to be living anywhere near it. So anyway, I ask your help, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. That does conclude our speakers. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment. Our next agenda item is Presentations and Proclamations. We have one presentation this evening. The presentation is E1, National Association of Energy Service Company Award for the Bellhaven Community Campus. City Clerk Heron, can you please call for Public Comment on Item E1?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Item E1, Presentation, National Association of Energy Service Company Award for the Bellhaven Community Campus, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at this clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for Public Comment on Presentation Item E1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next, well, the next item. Here to introduce the item is Emily Douglas from NG.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the council for having me here this evening. My name is Emily Douglas. I'm a Regional Director for NG Services. And on behalf of the whole local Bay Area-based NG team, I'm presenting this award to the city of Menlo Park from the National Association of Energy Services Companies. And it recognizes the city for the outstanding project that is this community center, for both the energy and sustainability aspects of the project, but also for its impact on the community. And those were vital to the award recognition. So everyone here parked or walked here under the most visible part of the energy element of this project, the solar power in the parking lot. I hope everyone has also gotten to enjoy the pool, which is also solar-heated and a unique part of this program. I hope we won't need the backup power that is also part of the energy part of this program, but I hope everyone knows that it will be here for this community when the time comes and if there is power outages to run the community center from the sun. And when it does act as an emergency center, I know you won't see any local air pollution because the facility will have clean renewable backup power when the time comes. So all of this was also part of the city's wise decision-making from an economic perspective, from a financial perspective, where the council and the city will be saving millions of dollars over the coming years in energy costs for this beautiful facility. But it feels wonderful to be in today. So thank you so much for having me, and I have the award from the National Association of Energy Service Companies for the city.
Thank you so much for the award, and just wanted to bring it back. Your class, your clap. The city clerk or myself do well for receiving it. Thank you. And does any of the council members want to say anything? Thank you. And thank you so much for bringing the award. And congratulations to Menlo Park. The next item on the agenda is our Consent Calendar. Under the Consent Calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on the Consent Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our Consent Calendar Item F1, City Council Meeting Minutes for November 12th and 19th, if you are participating in person, complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Final call for Public Comment on our Consent Calendar Item F1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And at this time, is there a motion and a second on the table to approve this Consent Calendar?
I'm happy to. Motion. Sure, I'll second that.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Door and a second by City Council Member Woolison to approve the Consent Calendar. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs? City Council Member Woolison?
Yes.
City Council Member Door?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is Regular Business. Under Regular Business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first regular business item is G1, Consider and Adopt a Resolution Declaring the Canvas of Votes Cast and Results of the General Municipal Election Held in the City of Menlo Park, November 5, 2024. Here to introduce this item is our City Clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So again, the item before the City Council is to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the November 5 election, which was a general election for two City Council seats in Districts 3 and Districts 5. For a little bit of background, on June 1, the City Council adopted a resolution calling and giving notice for the City Council elections in Districts 3 and 5. On July 9, they then adopted a resolution submitting to the electors a transient occupancy tax, or TOT, ballot measure, which would increase the city's TOT from 12% to 15.5%, and to be phased over two years. On December 5 of this year, the San Mateo County Elections Office certified the results of the election. And according to that official report, Jeff Schmidt with District 3 and Jennifer Wise of District 5 were elected as City Council members to full four-year terms. In addition, Measure CC was successful with 13,009 votes, or 83.55% of votes in favor. And per the Elections Code, the TOT ordinance will go into effect 10 days after the City Council certifies the results of the election, which is the action before the council this evening. This measure increases the city's TOT from 12% to 15.5%, but to be phased over in two years, with 14% being the rate change starting January 1 of 2025, and 15.5% being charged January 1 of 2026. So hotel, motel, and short-term rental agents shall begin collecting that increased 14% tax rate beginning January 1 of 2025. And with that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any clarifying questions or open it up to public comment.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. Are there any clarifying questions from City Council members before we go to Public Comment? City Clerk Heron, can you please take Public Comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Regular Business Item G1, Consider and Adopt a Resolution Declaring the Canvas of Votes Cast and Results of the General Municipal Election Held in the City of Menlo Park, November 5, 2024. If you are participating in person, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, pressing star nine. Participating via telephone, pressing star nine now. This will be the final call for Public Comment on Regular Business Item G1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. And at this time, is there a motion and a second on the table to approve?
I'm happy to move to accept these results. I am happy to second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Woolison and a second by City Council Member Door to adopt a resolution declaring the Canvas of Votes Cast and Results of the General Municipal Election Held in the City of Menlo Park, November 5, 2024. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
City Council Member Woolison?
Yes.
City Council Member Door?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is, our next regular business item is G2, Recognition of Our Outgoing City Council Members, Jen Woolison and Maria Door. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Item G2, Recognition of Outgoing City Council Members, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. All right, currently have, looks like six speakers. So this will be the final call for Public Comment Cards or Hands for Item G2. Okay, so our first speaker will be Lynn Bramlett, followed by Kevin Fong and Miles Goodman.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Bramlett, and I want to speak to each of our outgoing council members. I'll start with you, Council Member Woolison. I thought you made an excellent council member. I think you more than ably lived up to the trust that voters placed in you. You added innovations such as your newsletter, which was so helpful in adding context to the issues. During your tenure on council, I believe that our city has advanced significantly towards a more collaborative, transparent, and accountable city government. I have seen you consistently work collaboratively and diligently with others to bring about positive change. And you also have the courage to stand alone. You have accomplished so much to improve Menlo Park. I will miss you, and I'm also glad that you will now have more time for your loved ones and other interests. I have these flowers for you as a thank you. Council Member Door, to me, you also have more than lived up to the public's trust in you, the residents' trust. I think you've modeled integrity, graciousness, diplomacy, and professionalism throughout. I think you've also been a fantastic role model for others, especially younger people thinking about entering politics. I thought you were always well-prepared and responsible, even calling in to council on foreign trips abroad. I appreciated your gracious and thoughtful questions. The "I'm curious" was something I learned from, and the diplomatic way you gave your opinions. And I thought you had really novel ideas, too. You modeled civility to others throughout. You also showed the ability to stand alone, which is, I believe, very difficult. I felt as though I was entering a warm room whenever I saw you. Your office hours were well-attended, and I think people really felt listened to and heard. I know I did. Thank you so much for your service. I will miss you, and I'm so glad you still will be around for another seven months, and we're better off for your service. So I also have these flowers for you as a thank you. So Clerk Heron, where do I give the flowers?
Thank you, Lynn. I can take them and then deliver.
Take them, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, for your comment. Next up is Kevin Fong and Miles Goodman, followed by Francesca Segre.
Evening, Council. My name is Miles Goodman. I'm here on behalf of Senator Josh Becker's office. I want to just present a few remarks for our outgoing council members. On behalf of Senator Josh Becker and the rest of our district team, it is an honor to recognize the incredible contributions of Jen Woolison and Maria Door during their time on the Menlo Park City Council. Both leaders have embodied the principles of thoughtful governance and community-first advocacy, constantly working to make Menlo Park a more vibrant, sustainable, and inclusive place for all. Councilmember Woolison's commitment to save her streets in creating a city where families can thrive has inspired positive change that will benefit generations to come. Councilmember Door's passion for affordable housing, sustainability, and ensuring equity in policymaking has left a meaningful impact on the lives of so many folks, including myself. It's part of the reason why I decided to go back to school. Senator Becker and the rest of our team deeply appreciate your tireless efforts, collaborative leadership, and unwavering focus on improving the well-being of the community. As both of you transition from your roles on council, we extend our heartfelt gratitude for their service and look forward to the continued contributions they will make to our community and beyond. Thank you, Jen and Maria, for your vision, dedication, and legacy of service.
Hi there. Pardon me. Hi there. My name is Kevin Fong. I'm Assembly Member Mark Berman's District Director, and it's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. Want to echo what my colleague Miles had said on behalf of Assembly Member Berman. I want to thank both council members, Woolison and Door, for your service to the city of Menlo Park and its residents. It's not always easy, but you answered the call to serve your community. And now, as you conclude your service on the City Council, you leave the community a better place than when you found it, and I think that's all we can really ask for from our elected officials. So on behalf of Assembly Member Berman, want to extend heartfelt congratulations and best wishes in your future endeavors. Hard work to hand out.
Thank you, Kevin and Miles. So next up is Francesca, followed by Katie Baruzzi.
Hi, good evening. I'm so happy to be here tonight. My name is Francesca Segre. Maria Door, let me just, I don't know you well. Thank you for your service. I've only heard great things, so thank you. Jen Woolison, I know a little bit better. I've called Jen Woolison a friend, but also somebody who has served me well over your time in council. Been terrific. For those who don't know Jen or need a little refresher, Jen has always led with her values first and foremost. That's been her north star. And as she has said herself, doing the right thing is always the right thing. She has done tons of homework and research. She's thrown herself into this job entirely. And I think one of the most important things about Councilmember Woolison is that she's been thinking about how people live here now, but also about people who could be living here in the future and who can't right now. Always thinking about what's possible and having a vision for that. Thinking about the young people who might want to come back here after they're all grown up and have a house. Young people who may not be able to afford housing right now. So she's thinking not just about the people who are owning the homes right now and have privileges right now, but making space for them in the future. And to me, that's the really, that's the heart. That's very hard to do as a councilperson, making arguments for people who aren't even here to vote for you right now. But Jen, you've done it. You've served with a vision for a better Menlo Park in the future. And I really do hope that, even without an official title, that you continue to lead because that's not changing. You're a leader, and you've been doing great things for this community. And just to save time, I do want to welcome Jeff Schmidt and Jennifer Wise. They've already shown a great commitment to this community and great care. And I think they're going to be approachable and wonderful adds to the Menlo Park's City Council, and I thank you all for your service.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Katie Baruzzi, followed by Cassandra Matter.
Hi, Council. I'm Katie Baruzzi. I serve on the Planning Commission. I'm speaking for myself. I'm not going to repeat all the things that others have said about our outgoing council members, but I'm going to try to shoehorn a few different things here. First of all, I want to thank our mayor. I'm cheating. This is the next-gen item. But as I was riding up on my bike tonight, past the beautiful lights and the pool to our new community center, I thought about your vision and your leadership and how we got here. And there were some tough meetings. And I just want to thank you for making this space real and for the whole team, really, and the staff and the people who helped contribute to it. But I think Mayor Taylor deserves special credit for that. So thank you. Jen and Maria, this is such a hard job. And I don't think I knew how hard it was until I watched somebody that I loved and knew as a friend step into it. It's, you don't get a lot of pats on the back. You hear from people when they're mad. You hear from people about things they're mad about that you didn't have anything to do with. You hear from people who are mad about things that you have to do. And there's character assassination. There's, you know, they're taking kickbacks. There's all this crazy stuff. And the reality is you're public servants, and you step into this role of your free will. You make very little money. You spend hundreds of hours reading dense staff reports and speaking to residents and responding to constituent email and going to all those myriad meetings that these guys are going to find out about. Please don't leave. Stay. It's a lot. It's a lot, and it can break you. So I really just want to say I appreciate. I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate all you've tried to do. I appreciate the tough votes. I appreciate the easy votes. And I appreciate the bike lanes, the more affordable housing, the fact that we're spreading affordable housing in places in the city other than the Bayside, the fact that we finally got our housing element passed. There's a lot more to talk about, but I just really just want to say thank you. And it's not easy, and I'm grateful for your service. And I'm looking forward to seeing you both get a chance to relax. And I'm also grateful to the two people who decided, three people, actually, who decided to run for office in your stead who decided to run for office in your stead, because that's also really hard. It's a lot of knocking doors. It's a lot of answering questions, endorsement interviews, conversations with reporters that you weren't necessarily prepared for. And they're just getting started. So thank you all for your service. You're a great team. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you in some capacity in the future to make Menlo Park a better place.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Cassandra Matter, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Hello. My name's Cassandra. I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Ray Mueller, who is sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but he made sure that I came to express his deepest gratitude and recognition to Councilmember Maria Door and Jen Wallison for all of your hard work and commitment to the residents of Menlo Park, as he knows it well. And he's really appreciative and thankful for all the hard work you guys have put in. As well, to thank Mayor Cecilia Taylor for all your work as mayor and the incredible service you've all given to the residents of this fine city. And on behalf of Supervisor Mueller, congratulations, best wishes, and thank you. I have commendations and resolutions for you all on behalf of the county.
Thank you, Cassandra. Okay. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Brittany Baxter.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle. I'm a native of D3, a recovering homeless teacher, a public transit enthusiast, a commercial property manager by trade, and mom of a current fifth grader. Personal comments. Every time I think about the transition for the city government right now, I just become really teary-eyed. I've been trying to distinguish why for months now, and I finally figured it out. Not only does representation matter, but I have felt seen and therefore heard by Mayor Taylor, Councilmember Wallison, and Councilmember Door. For those of you who don't know me, I represent those of us in the community who hide in plain sight. I am a disabled person who has known chronic violence, poverty, homelessness, and suicidal ideation. I am a part of the community who has been bullied, ridiculed, and harassed. I recognize those who struggle and hide their pain. I have a habit of suffering in silence, too. But when you see me and you hear me, those hardships, those challenges, those habits start to become manageable. The burden eases. The pain subsides. The power and appetite to live breaks through. You've helped me become a healthy, stable person and an asset to the larger community. You will never know how much you have mattered to me personally and professionally. There are no words in the English language to express my gratitude. But my heart and all these molecules standing in front of you send this message of love to you now and always. Your seeing and hearing me translates into my seeing and hearing others like me and lifting them up. You are magic in our community, and I will miss you in these roles. Thank you for your dedicated work to the city. Jenny, from the comment place, black.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Brittany Baxter, followed by Zoe.
Hi, this is Brittany Baxter. I live in D3. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but wanted to say thank you to our outgoing councilmembers, Wallison and Door. I know from watching some, but nowhere even close to all of the council meetings that you've had over these last few years, that a lot of big projects have demanded a lot of your time, not just the housing element, but important topics like street safety, disaster preparedness, downtown vibrancy, climate work, and the city's first environmental justice element, among many others. And it was clear to me how deeply you both cared to really dive into the issues, consider all of the perspectives of the entire community, and just really fully understand all of the important issues that came to your desks. And thanks to that hard work and careful analysis, you're leaving behind a great legacy of helping Menlo Park to be an even more thoughtful, inclusive, vibrant, and climate-conscious community. So thanks so much for all you've done to make this such a great place to live now and for many years to come. Wanted to also congratulate our outgoing Mayor Taylor and our new councilmembers as well, Schmidt and Wise. So excited to see what you bring to the city. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Zoe, followed by a caller from 0447.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Hello, hi. I'm Zoe's mom. This is Kathleen. Zoe and I were members of the Menlo Park community for 15 years. Way to go, Menlo Park in Bell Haven. This is the first time I've actually seen the community campus. It is beautiful. And there's no parking here tonight because the crowd is so great. So it is absolutely stunning. I'm so happy for the Bell Haven community to see this beautiful thing come together. Mayor Taylor, I know you gave so much to make this center happen. Effort, your effort was so, the ultimate outcome is just so deserving. So great job. Mayor Wallison, or Councilmember Wallison, sorry. It's been an honor to know you. It was fun to watch you. And I remember conversations when you first decided to run for office. And you've done a great job. Mayor Taylor, you know I'm going to miss you as mayor. It's always fun to say, hey, I know the mayor. You've done a beautiful job as mayor. I might not be walking with you again. You, this may be your last run. I'm not sure. But if there's ever an opportunity to walk next to you to collect votes, I'm your person. Thank you so much.
Yeah. I'll just second everything. Mayor Taylor, you know, Wonder Woman of Menlo Park. Thank you for all you did and will continue to do. And Councilmember Wallison, same to you. Love you guys.
Thank you both for your comments. All right. And our final speaker is calling in with a phone number ending 0447.
Hello. This is Deborah Brown. I'm formerly a resident of Menlo Park. I still attend church there. And I just wanted to say how much I, as well as the congregation, appreciate Mayor Taylor. She's been a real blessing to the congregation, as well as the projects that she has been involved in, working tirelessly for the city of Menlo Park. She has a real burden and concern for the citizens there, and her work ethic is untiring. She has been relentless in her pursuits to build up that community and try to bring all of the residents together as one. She's done a beautiful job every time she's been at the helm. And we from the Church of God just want to let you know that we appreciate you. We pray for you, and we continue to look forward to working with you, whatever your future endeavors might be. So keep up the good work, and we will probably see you soon.
Thank you, Deborah. All right. It does look to be the end of our hands and cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who provided a public comment. I appreciate it. The first city council member we will recognize is Jen Wallison. Whereas in November of 2020, City Councilmember Wallison was elected as District 3's first representative on the Menlo Park City Council, then unanimously selected by her colleagues to serve as Vice Mayor for 2022 and Mayor for 2023. And whereas, City Councilmember Wallison has consistently demonstrated her commitment to safe streets by supporting projects to improve safety for all roadway users on El Camino Real, Menlo Avenue, and Middlefield Road, and providing essential insight on the city's Vision Zero Action Plan, which aims to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious injuries by 2040. And whereas, alongside prioritizing safe streets for all ages and abilities, City Councilmember Wallison has also championed housing affordability and accessibility, equity, sustainability, good governance, and civic engagement. And whereas, City Councilmember Wallison has represented the city on the governing bodies of commute.org, the City-County Association of Governments of Samatelle County, and the Cow Train Modernization Local Policy Group, and as a city council liaison to the city's Finance and Audit and Library Commission. Whereas, as Mayor, City Councilmember Wallison also represented Menlo Park on the Association of Bay Area Government, the Palo Alto Community Fund Advisory Board, the League of California Cities, and the Samatelle County County of Cities City Selection Committee. And whereas, a dedicated representative of District 3, City Councilmember Wallison has consistently kept constituents and community members informed with newsletters throughout their content and providing beneficial information on a regular basis. And whereas, City Councilmember Wallison's thoughtful leadership, ability to articulate and implement a vision, compassion, advocacy, and attention to detail have contributed greatly to the city council's ability to conduct business with accountability and transparency to city residents. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council recognizes and honors Jen Wallison for her dedication and service to the Menlo Park community. At this time, we can open it up for city council comment. I know Councilmember Door wanted to clap.
Councilmember Wallison, it's been such an honor to get to serve with you over the last two years. Your guidance, support, advice has been so important to me. And I have learned from your commitment to your residents, to our residents, and your commitment to make government accessible, whether that means going with me to Hillview to talk to middle schoolers or making your fantastic videos about the housing element and other things the city is doing. Your commitment is so palpable. And I am grateful to have served on this size with you and grateful to call you a friend.
As many have said, you have just been a fantastic council member and representative for the city. I really appreciate all the passion you've brought to the position and especially your advocacy for the safe streets and for housing. And also, I remember with the Reach Codes, we had many long meetings and really appreciate your leadership. And you will be very much missed. I hope you will stay involved with the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Wallison, I remember, I don't know if you remember, our first meeting in Starbucks on Santa Cruz many years ago when you were advocating for safe streets. You expressed a desire to get more, and I think it was on the Planning Commission then. And I said, do you really want to do that? Do you, can I talk you out of it? But tackle what others have said, I know I didn't really dissuade you. I'm glad that you follow that desire and that goal to get more involved. And as others have expressed, I think our city is better for it.
Yesterday, I actually called City Councilmember Jen Wallison to stop by my house, and I asked her not to cry at the city council meeting. It is really difficult not to share a heartfelt thank you to you for your service for the past four years. And the fact that you wanted to run in 2018 and you waited two years to run shows the commitment that you have for the city, the love that you have for service, and then also the quality of person that you are. Thank you. The next city council, you want to say something? Please do not make us clear.
All right. I'll try to keep it short.
You don't have to.
Thank you. Unlike you, I don't tend to keep things short. I'm truly overwhelmed with love and peace right now and gratitude for my colleagues and for the staff and the residents. This kind of feels like this is your life a little bit with all these faces that have been on this journey with me for many, many, many years. And I'm just so thankful to have had this opportunity to serve and to get to know so many of you. I wanted to read something that I sent out. So if you do subscribe to my newsletter, you would have already read this, but I just wanted to put this one on the record. Earlier this year, when I made the difficult decision not to run for reelection, I knew that there were some personal circumstances brewing that would necessitate a great deal of my attention. My mom has Alzheimer's disease, and this summer, I took on a greater caretaking role for her. I also now have two high schoolers, one of which is in the back. Wave hi, Jonah. And my time with them in the house is limited. I am the embodiment, like many of you, I'm sure, of the sandwich generation. This new life stage has me seeing life a little differently and thinking a lot about what matters most. A few weeks ago, I was lucky enough to see the Menlo Atherton High School's wonderful production of Thornton Wilder's Our Town. The show spoke to me and my current situation in that it beautifully encapsulated the fleeting nature of life and the importance of the people with whom we share it. It vividly illustrated how much the community in which we live contributes to the totality of our existence. At the end of the day, it's the people in our lives that make it worth living. As I transition off the Menlo Park City Council, I want to thank all of you for sharing this town with me and for trusting in me to make decisions on your behalf these past four years. My parting hopes for you are to be good to one another, to assume good intentions, and to do all of our parts to make our town, Menlo Park, the best it can be. So with that, I want to wish the best of success to all of you, to the incoming councilmembers, Wise and Schmidt, to our wonderful staff. Please be kind to them. They are so hardworking and wonderful. And to all of you, and just thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wallison. The next city council member we would like to recognize is Maria Door. Whereas, City Councilmember Door was appointed to represent District 5 on the Menlo Park City Council in January of 2023, becoming the youngest city council member in the city's history. And whereas, City Councilmember Door has used her experiences, background, and community input to provide thoughtful and valuable feedback to city staff on important initiatives such as the city's housing element and zoning updates, electrification programs for residents, adoption of the city's first Vision Zero Action Plan, safe streets improvement, and the environmental justice and safety elements. And whereas, City Councilmember Door has represented the city on governing bodies of regional organizations, including the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, Board of Directors, and the City-County Association of Government of Samatelle County Board of Directors. And whereas, City Councilmember Door also served as a city council liaison to the city's Planning Commission, Finance and Audit, and Housing Commissions. And whereas, City Councilmember Door has consistently sought to make local government more accessible and engaging for residents of all ages through public weekly office hours at Woodside Bakery, which were attended by residents and appreciated by neighbors. And whereas, City Councilmember Door, in her free time, participated in youth-led summits, Spanish-only panels on local government, and school classes, among other things, to help her residents find channels to engage in the local decisions that affect them. And whereas, City Councilmember Door's collaborative, friendly, and engaged leadership has been a great benefit to the city and community, encouraging participation, accessibility, and meaningful dialogues around important issues and key initiatives. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council recognizes and honors Maria Door for her dedication and service to the Menlo Park community. And at this time, I want to open it up to city council comments.
Councilmember Door, I just want to tell you that it has been a tremendous pleasure and privilege to serve alongside you these past two years. You always come incredibly prepared. You're one of the smartest people I've seen. And most of all, you always have a smile and a vision of positivity and really trying to make this world a better place. And you've just been an entire, complete inspiration for the youth of our community. And I hope that more of our youth will rise up to public service because of the example that you have shown all of us. I wish you nothing but the success. We expect great things from you in whatever you do. And you have to keep in touch. We're going to miss you.
That's hard to follow. You did a very good job encapsulating. Councilmember Door, Maria, I have so enjoyed.
Councilmember Door, Maria, I have so enjoyed serving with you, and I am so impressed with how you hit the ground running. And it is hard to start, it's hard to be a councilperson, and the learning curve is tremendous. And you had it, to do it so quickly, and just have done a fantastic job as a city council member, serving your district and the whole city with a special focus on the youth, which I think has been so important. And I greatly appreciate your passion for the environment that has just shown through. I think you've been such a dedicated representative on the Basca Board, and really appreciate all the feedback you've been giving us on that, and just on everything you do. So really will miss you, and I do hope you stay in touch while you're in town, and hope that you find other public service elsewhere. I think you would, you can go to great heights. You will do well. Thank you.
Councilmember Door, I also remember our first conversation. It was not coffee, but on the phone and echoing Councilmember Woolison, it was like you were exuding positivity, and I was like, "Oh, she really doesn't know what she's getting into." But I echo what others have said about your focus on the work and your passion, and I commend you for always focusing on where you think the city should be. And that has not always been easy, but thank you, and I wish you all the best.
Councilmember Door, two years has gone by really quickly, and I can count on one hand how many times we've been able to connect outside of a council meeting. And it was difficult because we can't talk at the dais. So just to get to know one another better, but also, you brought into council this joy and eagerness that I believe that, at least I'll speak for myself as the seasoned council member here at the dais, that sometimes we forget. And so, thank you. Thank you for reminding us of what that feels like, and also, thank you for taking your time out of the past two years to serve on the Menlo Park City Council.
Thank you so much, Mayor Taylor and councilmembers. I really appreciate it. I do have some words I'd love to share. Serving Menlo Park has been one of the most meaningful chapters of my life, and I am so thankful for the trust that everyone has placed in me to represent our community in District Five. Over the last two years, I have cherished the opportunities to work with neighbors, city staff, councilmembers, the mayor, and others to listen, learn, and help shape decisions that are affecting all of us. And I think especially serving in this role in my twenties and as a renter have been particularly powerful, because it has helped underscore for me how important it is to have a representative government, and to incorporate the diverse experiences and perspectives of everyone in our community, including those voices that might otherwise go unheard. And I am also so excited for what lies ahead for Menlo Park, designing safer routes on roads for all road users, reducing citywide emissions, improving resilience to flooding and groundwater rise, creating more diverse affordable housing, addressing historic environmental injustices, and fostering more economic vitality for our community. There is just so much to do, and I am excited to continue being involved on the other side of the dais as a member of the community in the coming months. So you have not seen all of me yet. And also, just serving on this council has affirmed to me how we all have agency, and that together, we can make Menlo Park a more vibrant, healthy, and welcoming place for all residents, those who are currently here and those who will come here. Thank you to Menlo Park for the opportunity to serve you. Thank you to Mayor Taylor and my fellow councilmembers for sharing this dais with me. Thank you to the incoming councilmembers for all the work ahead. Thank you to city staff for your hard work and your deep dedication to our community. And thank you to my friends, family, partner, for your support on this incredible, incredible journey. Menlo Park will always be a home to me. Thank you.
All right, I think I take it over from here. Okay. Our next agenda item will be recognition of the outgoing mayor. With that, I'll turn to the city clerk to call for public comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G three, recognition of outgoing mayor, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Currently have three speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G three, recognition of outgoing mayor. Okay, so our first speaker will be Maya Perkins, followed by Maurice Goodman.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to thank Mayor Taylor for your incredible service throughout your years on the council, and in particular, throughout this term as mayor. It has been such a pleasure to watch you work with grace and intention and brilliance, seeing the accomplishments that you've been able to make, from grand things like the building that we're in, to things that are just as important, helping seniors, the environmental work that you do, checking in on people individually is just an incredible thing for a single person to be able to accomplish. I say a single person, but I know that you have your council with you, and you're able to rally your colleagues and get the support and the buy-in from those around you, really listening to constituents like myself and others. And I just want to thank you for your leadership throughout this past year, and again, as your term on the council. So thank you so much. I'm proud to be a resident of Bell Haven and to have you representing me.
Thank you, Maya. Our next speaker will be Maurice Goodman.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say to the outgoing councilmembers, Jen and Maria, thank you for your service. I'd be remiss, because as a long-serving elected official, I know exactly how you feel right now. And so it's bittersweet, but there's a lot more better days ahead of you, and the work is there for you to do. So thank you for your service, and thank you for your stewardship of your community. Thank you. Now, I'd like to say, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to outgoing mayor Cecilia Taylor for her dedicated service to Menlo Park and its residents, her leadership as a community leader and the nonprofit community, championing environmental justice and healthcare equity, and then her role as the Vice President of the NAACP of San Mateo County, has definitely led to significant improvements in our community. Thank you so much. I also extend my warm congratulations and vote of confidence to the incoming councilmembers and Mayor Drew Combs. I look forward to collaborating with you, and we continue to, as we continue to advance our shared goals for a thriving, inclusive Menlo Park. Together, we can build on the progress made and address the challenges ahead. Thank you all, City Manager Murphy, staff, for your commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I did have a hand raised virtually, but it looks like it went down. So I'd like to give an opportunity for anyone who might have had their hand raised and lowered it, it might have been from a phone number ending in five, four, four, zero. If you still wish to speak, if you could press a star nine or engage that hand feature. Okay, doesn't look like I've had any additional hands raised, so Vice Mayor, you may continue.
Great, thank you, Clerk Karen. With that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Mayor Taylor was first elected to the city council in 2018, served as Vice Mayor in 2019, and mayor in 2020, and again as Vice Mayor in 2023, and mayor in 2024. And whereas Mayor Taylor has always worked diligently to further enhance the quality of life for all Menlo Park residents, prioritizing housing, safe streets, and climate action. And whereas a proponent of equity across the city, Mayor Taylor engages with community members where they are, attending many community events, making herself available to residents, liaising with local advocates, and encouraging youth participation in city initiatives. And whereas in 2024, the city council adopted the 2023-2031 general plan housing element, updates to the safety element, and its first environmental justice element, which identifies and addresses public health risk and environmental justice concerns, thus fostering the well-being of residents living in underserved communities. And whereas the city council also updated its procedure manual, implemented traffic improvements as a part of the Vision Zero Action Plan, directed a survey of childcare needs at Menlo Park, and made strides towards affordable housing and electrification. And whereas Mayor Taylor, as part of the Bell Haven Community Campus Ad Hoc Subcommittee, working with staff, stakeholders, and residents, sought to fruition the completion and opening of the Bell Haven Community Campus. And whereas Mayor Taylor also served on the Community Grant Funding Subcommittee, Commonwealth Redevelopment Agreement Negotiations Ad Hoc Subcommittee, and supported the Complete Streets Commission as the city council liaison. And whereas Mayor Taylor represented the city on the Association of Bay Area Governments, League of California Cities, Peninsula Division, Palo Alto Community Fund Advisory Board, San Mateo County Council of Cities, City Selection Committee, Home For All, and as a liaison to the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise District One Shore Line. And whereas Mayor Taylor consistently demonstrates her commitment to Menlo Park by encouraging transparency and accountability, prioritizing outreach to residents, and championing those who may be unsung and unheard in community conversations. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council recognizes and honors Cecilia Taylor for her dedication and service to the Menlo Park community. So I will open it to city council comments.
Mayor Taylor, I remember meeting you when you were first running for council many, many, many years ago, and it's been incredible to see your commitment to service of this community go from an idea to a reality to kind of sparked, I feel like, so much more than just one person could do on their own. And I'm going to miss serving with you. You've made me see the world differently. You've made me think of different questions to ask. I feel like you've made me a better person in the way I approach problems. We don't always agree on the solution, but you've always made me think about things differently, and I'll forever be grateful for that, and I'll always have kind of a Cecilia sitting on my shoulder. And I wish you nothing but the best. I wish you time for yourself to take care of yourself, because you're always taking care of others. So it's been a total pleasure. I've had so many fun giggles with you over the years, and I'll be just across the way, so come say hi sometime.
Mayor Taylor, thank you so much for your leadership. I admire you deeply as a public leader, as a person. And I remember the first time I saw you speak was at the San Mateo Climate Summit, the first one several years ago, and I was struck by the thoughtfulness, by the care that you showed, and by the resolve you had to affect change. And getting to serve with you, I have seen you take that resolve and care and put it into action in everything you do. Thank you. I appreciate you.
I am so excited that we still have two years left to serve together. There is so much left to do. I very much appreciate your year as a mayor and your leadership, your passion, and your grace through all the meetings. And it's, it is so apparent how deeply you care for your community and for your city, and how much you put into your work every day, and really appreciate all of that. And the fact that you did Stanford Fellowship on top of that this year is remarkable. Congratulations. And I do hope you have a little bit more time for yourself this next year.
So I'll stick with my theme, and I remember the first time we met. It was Cafe Baroni, and at that time, the city had citywide elections, and you were running, or you were planning to run, and you were trying to convince me to run with you, and I said, "No chance." But I remember giving you advice that I said, "Get some new comfortable shoes, because they don't crawl at Sharon Heights for no reason." They really are heights. And so, but what stuck out to me about that conversation, besides you trying to convince me to run, was your desire to give voice to this community, a voice that had not been heard on council for a number of times, and for a number of years. And that is what stands out to me. And so as we reflect on the end of your term as mayor, what I would say to you is, look around and look at what your voice did.
At this time, I want to thank my colleagues, because without them, it would have made my year as mayor even more challenging. It has been an honor to serve with all of you, a true honor. And what I did in 2016, the first time that I ran, was actually I talked to everyone who lost. I didn't want to talk to the winners, because there wasn't anything for me to learn from them. I talked to the two folks that did not win, and it has been just, I say it's God, the fact that I get to serve next to somebody that ran and lost again as well. And the other thing is, our future mayor and myself are the ones who actually ran citywide. So we knocked on doors from Bay Shore to the Sharon Heights, which made a difference when we actually got in office, because there was already a familiarity with certain communities, because we saw all of the communities in Menlo Park. I want to thank our Menlo Park residents. I want to thank the residents in my neighborhood, the Bell Haven neighborhood. I want to thank our current councilmembers, our outgoing councilmembers, and our future councilmembers. Staff, my family, friends, and anyone who stays in tune with what happens in local government, because I believe it's actually the most important. I have a three and a half page speech right now, and for me at this moment, it is more important to actually thank the other folks behind the scenes that made this year doable for me. That is, the Hillview students that came, 130 students came to the Menlo Park City Council chambers and talked to me about how to create their own constitution, because they believed that the power needed to be shared with them and the teachers. I also want to thank the Bell Haven students that came to the city council chambers as well, and the Beechwood students. I'm not sure if these are in order. Tonight, I want to recognize Nicole Casades, in appreciation of your thorough and thoughtful Tonight, I want to recognize Nicole Casades, in appreciation of your thorough and thoughtful support of Menlo Park's administrative processes. Rondell Howard, for your outstanding commitment to the Menlo Park community. Natalia Jones, for your outstanding commitment to the Menlo Park community. Judy Heron, in appreciation of your thorough and thoughtful stewardship of the city of Menlo Park's public process, our council meetings would not run at all without City Clerk Heron. And last, and I hopefully she is still here, is Sarah Sandoval, in appreciation of your service and dedication to the city of Menlo Park. It's actually been two years since she became the Deputy City Clerk. Without these folks, our city would not run the same. Our city manager probably would be late to every city council meeting. And a lot of documents would not make it to the city attorney. My leadership has always been rooted in how I can be most effective today, and how I can encourage my family, friends, and neighbors to be civically engaged. Those statements have evolved into how I can listen and learn more, so that I can improve my leadership. It is difficult for me to not make improvements within myself as I move forward. I know that I may make decisions that other folks do not agree with, and I want to thank those that appreciate me anyways. I do make decisions in how I process information and how I understand how it impacts others. It hasn't been easy to sit here for six years, but I am very grateful that I am here. And I will continue to serve in the same way. And I will continue to prioritize how I listen and learn from my community, from my future colleagues, from my current colleagues, and definitely from our Menlo Park city staff. You all make the community, the city, what it is today. I see improvements in every area, in every area. Even when someone still says something is wrong, I still can find something good somewhere that someone has done. And I want to thank all of you who chose to come out on a Tuesday evening and share this ceremonial experience with us. It is very, very heartfelt, and I did my best not to cry. But it is very difficult, because this is a warming event. And it is a very loving event, and a very respectful event. And I truly appreciate everything that Councilmember Nash shared with me. It has been great to serve with you on every subcommittee, every subcommittee. Vice Mayor Combs, future Mayor Combs, it has been an honor, an honor, to sit next to you in every meeting now, because you don't get to sit in the corner anymore. Councilmember Dorr, I'm just proud that you have that title. Because when I first met you, it was at Councilmember Nash's house. I think it was a New Year's Eve party? Or was it your election party? Wow, how ironic. And Councilmember Willison, I hope that we can, I don't know, revitalize Parents for Safe Routes. I know that was many years ago. But without you all, my work would not be possible. So thank you. I will turn the meeting back over to Vice Mayor Combs.
And I will turn it right back over to you.
At this time, the next agenda item is the swearing in of our new city council members.
First, I have to take public comment, so stay seated at our current city council.
City Clerk Heron, will you please take public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item G four, swearing in of new city council members, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen, calling in from a landlanyer cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G four. Seeing none, I would like to invite our city council member Alex up to the front, and we will proceed with administering the oath. All right, so I will ask each of you to raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, born and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. All right, you're in there. Come on over and sign.
Welcome, Councilmember Wise and Councilmember Schmidt. And at this time, I would like to open it up to the city council for comment.
I would like to echo the welcome and say I'm really looking forward to serving with you, and congratulations.
I'll refrain from telling the story of how I met both of you. But welcome, and I look forward to serving with you.
Councilmember Wise or Councilmember Schmidt, would you like to say anything?
Good evening. Thank you all so much for the warm welcome. I'm incredibly honored to serve with each of you. I would like to extend my thank yous to Jen Willison and Maria Dorr. If it were not for Jen Willison having coffee with me a couple of years ago when I joined the Live Rate Commission, I would not be sitting where I am today. And to Maria, thank you so much for all of your assistance and help, and I look forward to working with you as I get onboarded. Most importantly, thank you so much to the residents of Menlo Park. I am so honored to be your council member, and I am so grateful to the trust you've placed in me. I look forward to serving and doing my very best for you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and fellow council members. It's been a real pleasure to work with you and get to know you over the last few years, and I'm really looking forward to serving with you on council. Congratulations to Jennifer. It's been fantastic to get to know you, and I'm glad we got a chance to join together. I wanted to say thank you to my family for supporting me. First off, I know this was something that wasn't really expected, but when the chance to talk with Councilmember Willison came up and really understand her rationale for serving and then leaving, it really inspired me to consider what it would mean to run for council. And I was lucky enough to participate with the Fantastic Environmental Quality Commission, and hats off to that group, past and future, or past and current and future, because I think it's doing amazing things for the city, but it really gave me a grounding in public service that I hope to be able to carry forward in a lot of different decisions around the complex issues that we have in front of us. And I want to thank the residents of Menlo Park who have been, since about March, coming out and just answering their doors and joining for coffee and talking and just engaging on a really regular basis on all the things in front of us. So it's a real honor to be here, and I hope to always be accessible and open to listening to what everybody has to say, and, you know, please join me for coffee at Barone, nine to ten every Saturday morning. I'll be there. But thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it.
Thank you both. The next regular business item is item G five, selection of mayor and vice mayor. Here to introduce this item is our city clerk, Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Oh, right, so item G five, we're looking at the selection of mayor and vice mayor. Staff is recommending that the current mayor will turn the meeting over to the city clerk. The city clerk will ask each city council member the name of the council member they wish to serve as mayor. The person receiving the majority of nominations will be appointed. We will do a motion, second, and roll call vote, and we will follow the same process for the selection of vice mayor. The mayor and vice mayor term is one year, typically through the first, or the year from December to December, so expiring in December of twenty twenty-five. There's no questions. I can take public comment.
City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G five, selection of mayor and vice mayor, you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen, calling in from a landlanyer cell phone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on item G five, selection of mayor and vice mayor. All right, seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, would you like me to proceed with nominations, or if there's questions or comments from the council?
Please proceed with nominations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash has a question.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Perfect, thank you. So I will be going down the line for the appointment of mayor, and if it's okay with the council, I will just go in the order that you're currently seated. All right, I will be starting with City Councilmember Nash.
Vice Mayor Drew Combs.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
I'm glad I didn't go first. I'll say Drew Combs.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Taylor.
Drew Combs.
Thank you. City Councilmember Schmidt.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Thank you. And City Councilmember Wise.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Thank you. All right, and with five nominations, can I receive a motion and a second to appoint Drew Combs as mayor for twenty twenty-five?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by now City Councilmember Taylor, and a second by City Councilmember Nash to appoint Drew Combs as mayor for the one-year term. Any further city council question or discussion? All right, seeing none, by roll call vote, we'll go City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I will make this short. I have a four-year-old who's fading, so. The last time I became mayor was in front of a laptop in the corner of my bedroom. And so this is a very different scene, and a very, very welcome scene, given where we were as a country, as a world, as a community at that moment. During that time, it was something I carry with some pride that I played a small role, and as we as a community moved from from the pandemic. And so I'm honored to be taken on this role again. Glad that it is not during a global pandemic, and very much looking forward to serving with my new colleagues, Jeff and Jennifer, and my colleagues for the past six years. Cecilia and Betsy, I've learned so much from both of you over these six years, and so it is something I'm really looking forward to this next year as mayor. I also have to thank my family, my daughter Daily, my son Hyland, and my wife Alexa, who have put up with a lot for me to be able to do this for, and if you can consider the Bike Commission and Planning Commission for more than a decade now, that I have been doing this work for the city, and I would say it's been some of the most impactful and meaningful work that I have done in my life. And I am grateful for the opportunities to do it as mayor for the next year, and to do it as a member of this body for the next two years. So with that, we'll move on to and look for my space. Can you please, Clerk Heron, take nominations from the city council for the selection of vice mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, I will go in alphabetical order by common use first names. So again, we will be starting with City Councilmember Nash, your selection for vice mayor.
Can I go first? I'll take a mayor's prerogative and go first. And nominate Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. And we'll just keep going down the line. City Councilmember Taylor.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. City Councilmember Schmidt.
Councilmember Nash.
You, City Councilmember Wise.
Councilmember Nash.
And City Councilmember Nash.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. And with five votes, if I can have a motion and second to appoint City Councilmember Nash as vice mayor.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor, and a second by Mayor Combs to appoint Betsy Nash as vice mayor for a one-year term. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item G six, the next regular business item, which is consider and adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five city council regular meeting schedule. Here to introduce the item is City Clerk Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So again, the item before the council is to adopt a resolution approving the attached city council regular meeting calendar for twenty twenty-five. Typically, regular city council meetings are held the second and fourth Tuesday. There are a handful that are proposed to be rescheduled for different holidays and school breaks, which is all found in the staff report, as well as Exhibit A to the resolution. With that, happy to answer any questions or open it up to public comment. Mayor Combs should be proceed with public comment.
Yeah, sorry.
Great, thank you. All right, so at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on item G6, consider and adopt a resolution approving the 2025 city council regular meeting schedule. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlanyer cellphone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on regular business item G6. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Very thank you, Clerk Karen. So bringing it back to the dais, I'll open up for a city council questions, discussion, or, or a motion.
I will move to approve the city calendar. I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by city council member Taylor to adopt a resolution approving the city council's 2025 meeting schedule. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
City council member Schmidt.
Yes.
City council member Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on the final, to the final regular business item, which is appoint city council representative and alternates to various local and regional agencies as liaisons to city council advisory bodies and to standing and ad hoc subcommittees. Here to introduce the item is city clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So yes, the item for the city council is to make appointments as representatives, alternates, and liaisons to various agencies and ad hoc and standing subcommittees. The recommendation by staff for the city council is to solely appoint to the City County Association of Governments, or C-CAG, as that body will be meeting before our next December 17th, the city council meeting, where the city council has the opportunity to appoint to all of the various agencies. And with that, I have no further comments and can either answer questions or open up public comment.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's call for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G7, appoint city council representatives and alternates to various local and regional agencies as liaisons to city council advisory bodies and to standing and ad hoc subcommittees. If you are participating in person, complete a speaker card at the back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlanyer cellphone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on item G7. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Clerk Karen. So the only appointments we're going to make is C-CAG. And we're, we're all aligned with that. So in the current representatives are, are, were, are former council members, Doran, Doran Woolison, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any council member who?
Could you please remind us of the schedule?
I mean, just one moment. So they are a Brown Act body, and they meet on the second Thursday of the month at 6:30 in San Carlos.
Yeah, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I am interested in being the primary on C-CAG.
Okay. Is there anyone interested in being alternate?
I will be the alternate.
Okay. That, so then can I, Clerk Karen, move that we appoint council member Taylor as the primary and Vice Mayor Nash as the alternate?
Yes, so we'll have a motion by Mayor Combs, and then we'll need a second.
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by city council member Wise to appoint city council member Cecilia Taylor as primary and Vice Mayor Betsy Nash as alternate to C-CAG. Any further city council question or discussion?
I would just like to officially ask whether council member Schmidt or council member Wise had any great interest in this.
I'm happy for all, you all to serve for now. Yeah, thank you.
Same here, I think the continuity is.
Wonderful. I just don't want you to.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, by roll call vote, Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
City council member Schmidt.
Yes.
City council member Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very thank you, city clerk Karen. And, and yes, there, there will be many committees, subcommittees, commissions, GPAs. Don't worry, you, the fun is coming. With that, we'll go on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items, however, and city council member, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on the informational items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on informational item H1, city council agenda topics, or H2, comprehensive shuttle study update, participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landlanyer cellphone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items H1 and H2. Right, and our speaker will be on item H1, Charlotte Reed.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, council members, and congratulations to the two new incoming council members. I'm really looking forward to seeing how you're going to work for the city of Menlo Park. I wanted to offer comment on item H1 because it relates to what was discussed at the previous city council meeting related to agenda item G1, which is to consider and adopt a resolution declaring downtown parking plazas 1, 2, and 3 as exempt surplus land and provide feedback and authorize staff to release a request for qualifications for affordable housing on parking plazas 1, 2, and 3 to implement housing element H4.G. So I looked at the staff report, and this will also be an item that's included because the vote is coming up on January 14th. And in the previous meeting, Vice Mayor Nash had proposed a work group for communications to the community related to the status of this item. I live in District 4, so I live right across the street from Drager's, and I see a lot of signs from local businesses that are promoting their perspective, their point of view. You know, whether the information is correct or not in the bulletins and the signs they put up is, you know, I haven't looked that closely at them, but I know it's related to the public comments that were given during the previous city council meeting. And I'm curious to know if there will be a status update on the communications work group related to informing members of the community about the status of the vote, you know, what's going to be in the proposals just based on the conversations that were had. And this is relevant to folks on either side of the, you know, housing conversation, whether they're in favor of it or not. So it would, as a District 4 resident, it'd be great to get an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. That is our final speaker. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you very much for, for the public comment. I will, does the city manager want to provide, or the assistant city manager, just a general statement to some of the communication efforts that have commenced since the final council meeting, or since the last council meeting?
Yes, I'm happy to provide an update. We are currently holding a meeting tomorrow morning focused on downtown business owners. It's at 9:00 a.m. We are planning a citywide mailer that should be hitting mailboxes next week. We have two digital message boards in parking plazas 1 and 3 directing readers of those boards to our website. It's menlopark.gov/downtownhousing. We've added a button on our homepage that takes you directly there. That's where we've developed a variety of frequently asked questions based on the feedback and public input we've heard to date. So you'll find a lot of the, the topics that have come up in previous meetings answered in the FAQs there as well. There's an ability to subscribe to our listserv as well, and you can find that on the webpage that I just listed. And we have been pushing out email communications to the people on that list and, and others as well across the city. There is more planned as well, but that's just a snapshot of what's happening right now.
Thank you for that update.
I may have missed this, but there's also, the city now has on their web, on their homepage, one of the blocks in the, at the top says downtown Park, downtown housing. And so it's very easy, if you didn't catch that URL, if you don't know how to get there, just go to the homepage. There is a place where you can go directly to downtown housing.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash and Assistant City Manager Stolti for the, the comment. I'll, I'll just take a little bit of ad that, you know, obviously, in, in January, we will have this again as, as an agenda item. And there will be lots of information, lots of, even before the last council meeting, there was lots of information shared. That won't bring us to 100% agreement. It's, it's not an information issue. The issue is, is that there are people who disagree about the path forward. And that's, that's fine, that's valid, that's our system and our, our way. But certainly, there's been lots of information, and there will be lots more. But at the end of the day, it'll, it'll be a, a decision that our community needs to make about what, what's the path forward there. Yeah, but please, Vice Mayor Nash.
And also, please do feel free to, as a District 4 representative, contact me directly and, or any of the other council members that are up here. We're more than happy, as a matter of fact, we would be very excited to, or I'll speak for myself, but I think I speak for everyone. We would be very excited to engage with the community members on this and have been doing that quite a bit.
Now we'll go to city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor Combs. So just real briefly, I'd like to extend thanks on behalf of the organization to our outgoing council members, council members, former council member Dorr, former council member Woolison, recognition of our outgoing mayor, Mayor Taylor. Thank, thank you for continuing on, serving in the city council. Thank you to the new council members, council member Schmidt, council member Wise. Looking forward to working with you, and congratulations to Mayor Combs and Vice Mayor Nash in your new roles for this year. So with that, that concludes the city manager report for this evening.
Very thank you, city, city manager Murphy. With that, we'll go on to city council member reports. Any reports from city council members since the November 19th city council meeting?
I want to thank staff for a fantastic event last Friday that light up the season was, there were so many community members there, and I think it was really enjoyed by all. And it was also very nice to see the oak tree lit up and the pine tree get a little bit of chance to recover. But it was just a really well-done event. So thank you to staff and to all the community members who came out.
Yeah, thank you. And I will add, it's this weekend, right? We'll have photos with Santa in this room, right? And so although that's, you, you have to reserve a spot online, so I don't know if there's still availability, but, but go and check, and, and we'll have photos with Santa on Saturday, right? I think so. So cool. With that, we, we will adjourn the, the meeting for the evening. Thank you all for, for joining us.
Thank you. And for everyone who was in person, we have a